Just want to read something, um, just, uh, we are deeply saddened by the tragic events that folded this weekend involving the shooting of two Minnesota state legislators. Representative Melissa Hartman and Senator John Hoffman, as well as their spouses. Our hearts are with the victims, their loved ones and communities they served. We're grateful for the law enforcement officers who acted quickly to apprehend the suspects and who work every day to keep our communities safe. Political disagreements must never turn into act of violence. Our democracy relies on respectful debates and rule of law. At this time, as we rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, remember those impacted by this tragedy.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with approving or remending the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the publish agenda? If there are none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Schumer, second by Zanto, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, no deputy tonight, so moving to consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda, which are considered routine or non-controversial, are included as part of the consent agenda. Unless a council member specifically requests that an item on the consent agenda be removed and considered separately. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion, a second and a vote. Any item removed from consent agenda shall be placed at the end of general business. Tonight on consent agenda, we've got three point one. Approved the minutes of the June second, twenty twenty five city council meeting. Three point two, start data, new health insurance policy. Three point three, approved the testing proposal from Braun Intertech for the County Road twenty seven bypass lane project. And three point four, approved payment claims and transfer requests as presented. Is there anything that any council member would like to remove and consider separately? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Jay.
Second.
Thank you, Leroy. A motion by Satterbox, second by Schumer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Open forum. The public forum is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the council. The public forum will be no longer thirty minutes in length, and each presenter will have no more than five minutes to speak. Topics of discussion are restricted, local governmental topics rather than private or political agendas. The council may discuss, but will not take formal action on public forum presentations. And we will start with, uh, Tom Bryant. If you don't mind, Tom stepping up to the podium there and pushing the rectangle button to turn that microphone on.
Mayor. Council members, my name is Tom Bryant. I have served as the chairman of the Government Center Citizens Advisory Committee for the past ten months. I'm speaking to follow up the committee's presentation that I made at the May nineteenth city council meeting. To provide additional information on snow plowing and the current city hall building. Regarding snow plowing. I and other committee members have recently heard questions being raised about what happens if our contractor, Gallagher's Incorporated. Would either cease providing snow plowing services during the term of their contract. Or not extend or renew the contract for twenty twenty eight and beyond. As detailed in our committee's final report. Gallagher's has been in business for some thirty-five years. A company remains in business that long because it provides the services for which it is contracted and agreed to. Moreover, the committee's report listed three other companies that provide snow plowing services to nearby townships. Which could also be options for Credit River in the event that our current contractor, for whatever reason, would not perform those services. Now Gallagher's, according to our report, uses six snowplows and seven employees to plow Credit River streets. They don't plow streets for any other city or township, just Credit River. If the city itself were to duplicate what Gallagher's currently provides, it would mean buying land. Constructing a public's work building. Buying snowplows at a cost of about three hundred thousand dollars apiece and employing drivers and mechanic. All at a cost of millions of dollars to taxpayers and ongoing employee and maintenance costs. The committee's final fifty-page report was methodical in its analysis of options for snow plowing and a public's work building. Our recommendation stands that there's no identifiable need to purchase snowplows or buy land to construct a public's work building at some point in the future. Regarding the city hall building. The committee considered four options. One, do nothing, currently use it as it is. Two, expand and remodel the building. Three, demolish this building and rebuild a city hall on this same site. Four, buy land and build a new city hall. The committee recommended option number two, expand and remodel the building. But there was a caveat. In our report, we recommended an environmental survey, which would include a soil test. Why? Because there's something not right with the air quality in this building. About ten years ago, the city removed mold from this building, but an odor and smell are still present, some liken it to diesel fuel. And that may be because the road grader the city owns and operates was originally stored in this building. The city should find out, um, what is still causing the odor and if need be, rectify the problem. In conclusion, the committee believes that the council should take a first step. Do a soil test. Find out if there's anything wrong with the soil or even the cement slab underneath this epoxy floor. And then go ahead and decide what recommendation to consider, uh, moving forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Um, my name is Jared Cruz. I was also on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Regarding the public works facility in New City Hall. My background is in risk analysis, risk assessment, and I just wanted to bring a few other, uh, points to the, uh, council for, um, consideration. Moving forward with, uh, some of the recommendations. From a risk analysis aspect, um, both hiring and firing qualified employees, how do we deal with employees, uh, making sure that we have enough employees? Again, that risk goes all back on the contractor where we pay simply the fee, don't have to worry about any of that stuff, right? Um, also, what happens if we hire, uh, our own employees, uh, our own plow trucks and so forth, uh, an accident, they hit a mailbox, they get a car crash. That falls back on the city where currently it falls back on the contractor, um, where the city is, again, there's no cost to us. And once we purchase or if the city council were to move ahead with a, um, with a city hall building and public works facility and so forth, that's almost in my mind, kind of a point of no return. Um, it's, we can't regress from that, from that, uh, excruciating cost, I feel. Um, and again, you know, looking at qualified individuals for maintenance, uh, cost aspect and so forth. But again, it's to me, the, the risk falls back on simply the contractor, not the city at all. Um, and like Tom had stated too, contractor that's been in business for that long. I don't foresee them leaving or disrupting business operations at any point. And I guess another aspect is if, kind of the same mindset that if somebody was going to roof your house, right, contractor, and the contractor faults. The responsibility goes back on the contractor, or the contractor goes out of business or doesn't finish the job. He called another contractor to finish it. Um, and again, it doesn't fall back on the homeowner like it would the city if the city were to move ahead with the city hall, um, and public works facility. So. So I've got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I've got a Chad, uh, sorry, struggled reading the last name. Is it Fandrich?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, now you have to talk. You put your name on the list. You got five, you gotta fill the next five minutes. Awesome. All right. Anybody else wish to speak in open forum tonight? Brad?
Brad Hoffman, moderate advocate. Um, I would like to, uh, just reiterate what, uh, the other two members of the building committee has, um, the other thing I'd like to point out is that, um, I do feel like snow plowing is, is a disaster. It'll cost us over a million dollars a year. We're currently paying under a hundred thousand to Gallagher to do our snow plowing. The proposal to remodel this building. We have six or seven hundred thousand dollars of COVID funds. We feel that we could remodel this building with no effect to the taxpayer. Our taxes don't go up, and it's probably the only option that gives us the ability to get better, uh, facilities for the workers here without increasing our taxes. So I think that's an important thing, and it was one of the reasons we wanted to recommend that. I know we also talked a little bit about renting. Um, some facilities, but I think remodeling this is probably the best choice. And, um, as far as the environmental study goes, I think regardless of what we do with this building, we're going to need to do it at some point. Even if we decided to sell this, we're probably going to have to test the soil. So, uh, it seems reasonable that we would start by doing some soil testing and finding out what we've got here. And I would encourage us to proceed with that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anybody else for open forum tonight? No, Tim, not you.
Pushed for two weeks, so finally got it back.
So now you're gonna ruin it tonight?
I'm gonna burn it out today.
Tim Conroy, Johanna Drive. Uh, we've talked enough about city hall and plowing. I want to talk about seven point one temporary patching or overlay. Now, I don't know if anyone's looked at the streets since last year. We had a good year with no plowing for the most part, so we didn't get a lot of damage. Heaving, shrinking, heaving. But Pebble Brook had fourteen houses or has fourteen houses. West Side Drive has thirty-five, so roughly there's four houses. And they had a professional braid paving job done on those two streets. We attempted to do a circle, Pharisee circle or whatever, and did with Prior Lake asphalt. And it was kind of a different job. I know it was a freebie, but we still ended up paying because it's money. They didn't just blacktop it for nothing. I'm proposing or hoping that we do a better job since we have over a hundred and forty people in our neighborhood using that main in and out since Scott County, May twenty-seven. A superhighway. There's only one way in and out, and a lot of people that go to Pebblebrook use John Deere or Johanna to cut through to John Deere to sneak through rather than go up and button hook in on another route. So we have easily over a hundred and fifty. Multiply that by two cars or four cars and some neighbors, a lot more traffic going in and out. So I'm hoping that we really think about a decent overlay to get us through till water does show up and come. Which we know it's coming, but we don't know when. But until then, people that live there that are paying and have paid would request a decent road, I guess is what we're asking. So, and then also, the day they do it, is someone going to be out here to watch it? Because I caught the tail end of Prior Lake last time, putting asphalt in that basically they just threw the money in the ditch because it, it didn't hold up, it didn't stay. So I'm hoping that the money you're coming up with or finding to do this, I hope it's a top grade, good job, is what I'm hoping for. So when you guys talk about that tonight, think long and hard about our investment on making it last to the next project that's going to happen. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, guys.
Anybody else for open forum tonight? Seeing none, we'll close open forum and we'll move into presentation five point one, twenty twenty-four audit presentation. We've got Alex here from ABDO to give us our presentation on the results of our audit. Alex?
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I'll just introduce myself quick. Uh, my name is Alex Triple. I work with ABDO, um, regional accounting firm here. We started in Mankato, have another office in Edina. I've been working with them for about five years now and, um, working here on the city of Credit River Audit for the past couple. Um, I'll just be going through, um, the twenty twenty-four audit here, um. Thanks, Steve. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, we'll start with our opinions and then kind of go into more detail about, uh, what we actually saw during the audit. So to start off, we have two opinions here. This first one, our auditor's opinion is an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It's a clean audit report. We believe that the financial statements are fairly stated as it, um, relates to materiality. And then this next part here is the Minnesota legal compliance. This is just making sure that payments are made on time within that thirty-five day, um, statute. Making sure that you're going through the proper bid and quote process to approve different contracts and stuff like that. Again, no issues there. Everything looked good from audit perspective. Moving on to your general fund, fund balance. Um, you guys implemented that new fund balance policy of between forty and fifty percent of the following year's budget. Uh, we have three different lines here. That first, that top line, that orange line is the total fund balance in the general fund. That's about a hundred and eighteen percent of, uh, twenty twenty-five's budget expenditures of just over three million there in that yellow line. And then that black line shows what percentage of that total fund balance is unassigned and assigned. And that ninety-two percent is split pretty evenly between assigned for that, uh, cash flows and contingencies and then unassigned balance. You guys feel free to stop me with any questions you have.
I just have a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
So our, our policy actually is unrestricted fund balance of forty to fifty percent, which includes committed, assigned and unassigned classification. So I just want to clarify that it's three categories that make up the forty to fifty percent.
Yep, that's right. Sorry about that. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Then we'll move into the general fund budget to actual here. So up top, we have your revenues and expenditures right away, and we're just comparing that what actually happened in twenty twenty-four to what the approved budget showed. So revenues were a little under the expected amount or the budgeted amount. There's a little less grant revenue came in than was anticipated when putting the budget together. And then for expenditures, those were well below the budgeted amount. Um, there are less development related costs, um, legal, planning, inspection, stuff like that. There's also about eighty thousand dollars less in plow costs than the budget called for. So that resulted in a about a three hundred thousand dollar increase, um, before these other financing sources and uses, which are transfers in and transfers out. That transfer in to the general fund was closing out that road and bridge fund, moving that money from that fund over to the general fund. And that transfer out of six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars was a transfer out to the capital improvement fund for, uh, like the government center land purchase. Which was approved, uh, by the council in twenty twenty-four. All in all, that resulted in a about a million dollar increase in that general fund fund balance. Again, based on that last slide, well within that new policy that you guys have, almost double it. So really good year for the general fund. Fund balance looks really healthy. And then moving on to your, the general fund revenues by type. Um, those taxes steadily increasing from year to year, licenses and permits are sticking pretty close to the past couple of years. And then in twenty twenty-three, in the intergovernmental revenue, you see that large spike in yellow. Um, that's from twenty twenty-three, that public safety aid that came in at the end of the year. And twenty twenty-three, and then also ARPA funds being recognized in twenty twenty-three. Then that other, that large outlier and the other category in twenty twenty-four, that includes that large transfer into the general fund, which is why you see that large increase there. Then moving on to the general fund expenditures by type, um, general government, public safety, pretty steady increase just as costs rise, paying for everything. It's things are going up. That public safety is mostly made up of fire costs, so that was a pretty gradual increase as well. And that large increase you see in public works was in twenty twenty-four, there was more spent on patching rock salt for the roads during the year. And then not much change in culture and rec or capital outlet year to year. Moving on to the different types of funds, starting with the special revenue fund balances, uh, up top, we just compare the change in total fund balance for each of the special revenue funds. That road and bridge fund showing a large decrease. Again, from that large transfer out of that fund into the general fund. And then that park fund increased slightly. That didn't have any expenses in twenty twenty-four. That was just building permit revenue that came in and interest earned on the cash balance in that fund.
So, so Alex, can I clarify something? So the road and bridge fund, that was dissolved or that was ended. We, we closed that fund. So really what the four fifty-one represents is the lot fee fund and and one other fund, but it's not the road and bridge. It's a lot fees and, um, turn, turn lane, turn lane fund. There's two funds.
Yeah, we, yeah, that is right. We had everything, we had three different funds grouped into that same one. So
I just don't want to sell that road and bridge because we've closed that one and it's confusing.
Mm-hmm. And we can, again, we go through our review process. We'll send this over and have it reviewed. I think that maybe just wasn't caught on either end, changing that title. We can obviously change that title going forward.
Okay.
But yeah, thanks for bringing that up. And then on to the capital funds here, we have that road and bridge fund should, oh, sorry, I'm on the next slide. Uh, this is fine. Okay, the capital improvement fund, that major fund, that incurred a lot of costs in twenty twenty-four for that street overlay project. Um, it was offset by that transfer in, that six hundred thousand transfer out of the general fund into the capital improvement fund. Resulting in that two hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase in fund balance despite those costs for the twenty-four overlay. And then that twenty twenty-one road project fund that is done and that is closed out, so that fund balance is now at zero. And then down below, you can see what portion of those fund balances make up the committed, the assigned and the restricted amounts. Uh, there's no longer any restricted funds in there due to that road project fund being closed. And then the committing and assigned is made up of the capital improvement fund. That assigned portion, like I said, is that transfer out of that six hundred thousand. Here we show the outstanding debt. And the bottom graph here kind of shows that future debt payment schedule, uh, that darker orange color makes up the principal, and then that lighter amount at the top represents your interest. So these coming years, we have three bonds up top that are all dropping off within the next ten years. So you'll see the obligation and those payments go down pretty significantly into the next few years, and that kind of frees you guys up to either take on more debt, be done with debt. It's up to you, obviously, but so far, I mean, it looks really good, so. We'll move on to cash and investment balances, and then we break it out by fund type. That total cash balance increased from twenty-three to twenty-four. A lot of that having to do with just timing of payments. There are a lot more outstanding accounts payable items at the end of the year. So the cash at the end of the year, you guys had more of it, but there was more owed out to vendors at the end of the year. So the graph makes it look like, looks like it increased more significantly than it maybe did after year end. It wasn't as dramatic. Moving on to the sewer fund, um, we see a really good increase on the top there in revenue. Coinciding with that is the dispersments as well. Overall, you can see down below that minimum target balance line. That black line is thirty-five percent of operating costs is where you want your cash balance. You guys at eight hundred and eighty-two thousand are well above that. Um, that lower colored portion, that dark orange portion is unrestricted, then that lighter portion is restricted, um, for capital. Moving on to some comparative data here, um, I'll kind of, we'll see a few of these graphs on the next couple of slides. So that orange color that represents class four cities, what that is, is cities statewide with a population between zero and ten thousand. So we're comparing with those cities with that population, and then also the yellow is Scott County. And then this black line is going to be Credit River. So starting with the tax rate here, you guys are well below the comparative region in Scott County. Um, and then the taxes per capita are increasing a little bit, but again, well below what we're comparing you guys to. Uh, moving on to debt, these are the same type of graphs here. We got debt per capita. Again, you guys' debt is looking good right now, and it's going to get even lower. So that debt per capita, we're projecting it to go down again. Much lower than what we're comparing to. Then moving on, we have the debt service expenditures as a percent of other current expenditures. That spike where you guys are well above in twenty twenty-one, that is the last year you guys actually issued debt. And then that kind of planes off after that, and it's going to plane out going forward. And then moving on to capital expenditures, um, sorry, just regular expenditures. Um, again, same comparative data. You guys are well below what we're comparing you guys to. From our perspective, that's not necessarily a good thing or a bad thing. It's up to you guys how you want to spend your money, what you want to spend it on. Um, we're just giving you the information and Um, we're just giving you the information and that um. Kind of wraps that up to again, just up to you guys what you want to do. And that is all we got. There's your audit team, and uh I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Alex. Yeah, council members, any questions?
I do. Jay, do you have any? Um, in our annual report on page twenty one, it talks about public safety program revenue. Of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't even know what that is.
I don't have the report pulled up in front of me right now. I can look into that and I can get back to you for sure, though.
Can I send you, I'll send Steve questions and he can.
Okay, that works.
I'll send you all my questions. I said, send all my questions.
Okay, that sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you, Alex. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you. Have a good evening. All right, we'll move into general business seven point one quotes for temporary temporary patching overlay on Casey Parkway and Ferris Lane, Engineer Nelson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor Council. So as uh requested at an earlier council meeting, we have solicited folks to do what we call a temporary overlay. Uh, two roads within the KC addition. The reason that we're doing these temporary overlays are primarily because. Uh, we've experienced delamination uh on these roadways. Uh, and that delamination and making the road surface just very rough. Uh, the difference between a a temporary overlay and uh the improvement overlay that we've uh Mr. Conroy spoke about. Uh, is that normally if if we're doing an improvement overlay, we're going back, we're tying into driveways. Um, we're uh doing shouldering uh adjacent to the road. And there are a couple of uh constraints or reasons why. Why that's that method had not been chosen for the KC addition. Uh, one of them was just the the age of the road. Generally, we're trying to do those improvement overlays earlier on in the life cycle while the pavement's still in better condition. Uh, but the other one, if you were to drive out, I say Casey Parkway. Uh, right now, the the road edge is up here, and it just drops off uh almost uh at a three to one slope from the road edge.
Into the ditch?
To the ditch, yeah. And so it it'd be really hard to to go up with our overlay. Uh, and uh shoulder that with, you know, two foot of gravel like we normally do, and then. You know, it just there's not enough roadbed there. So uh if we were to do uh an overlay, kind of using the same method as as our. As our, you know, West Side Drive and Pebblebrook, uh our pavement would be up above the the turf of the grass. We could try lap dirt and seed and uh that, but that's always a, you know, it it rarely ever takes the first time. Sometimes we're back in there in situations like this, maybe three or four times uh before we get. Uh, but I I don't want to say before we get good cover because sometimes it's just a matter of we've done it four times. Uh, and you know, it's really hard to get grass to grow if we're not there watering every day, so. Um, so so anyway, these quotes, we we did send this out to uh three contractors for quotes. Uh, and this uh and this would be for the same specs that we used last year. It's my. To the right page. So we did, so two of the contractors uh provided us a quote. And uh the third Northwest Asphalt chose not to submit a quote for this work. A low contractor, the whole quote amount was actually uh McNamara Contracting. Just got to the right section here. So McNamara Contracting, I had a total quote uh in the amount of sixty-two thousand eighty-seven dollars, and prior to Lake Blacktop. Uh, their quote was for sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars headsets. Uh, so therefore, we recommend that we uh the city choose the lowest quote, which is from McNamara Contracting.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Uh, council, any comments or questions?
I have a question. Shane, on Casey Parkway, is that going all the way down to Joanna?
Uh, no, this will just be basically twenty-seven from the new pavement to John Deere.
And then Shane, the other thing, you talked good, you know, you'd made some good comments regarding the difference between this. You know, temporary patch project and the what we did on Pebblebrook and West Side last year with our cap improvement. Um, maybe for understanding residents, talk about kind of our pavement maintenance program, how we would normally do that on a a a road that is. You know, similar to Pebblebrook, where we know when we paved it, had it up to the certain standard, what our intervals are through that point.
Sure, yeah, I mean, Mr. Mayor, that's a good um, a good point to to hit on. So so basically, when the the pavement is new for the first. Uh, several years, really, the only maintenance that it needs is crack filling. Crack filling is probably our biggest thing for the buck uh maintenance practice because. Uh, our biggest enemy uh as far as road stability will be water in the face. Uh, so uh we crack fill all of our new pavement on a rotating basis every two to three years. Uh, and then uh previously before uh before. Statewide, we started experiencing experiencing problems with seal coating. Uh, we used to seal coat our roads every ten to twelve years. Um, or I'm sorry, every seven years. Um, so we we go through two seals seal coat cycles. Uh, and then uh we would go and overlay usually between year eighteen and twenty. And again, the the whole point is we're trying to, or with that program. Uh, we are applying a either a uh maintenance or a repair and improvement. Uh, while the pavement's still in good condition, and our goal is to try to extend the pavement's life in good condition for as long as possible. And then also recognize lower lifecycle cost uh as compared to, you know, uh previous if or in other municipalities. If you don't do a lot of maintenance, uh you're you're likely only gaining twenty years out of your roadway, so. Uh, right now, I think we have some roadways that are well over thirty years old. Uh, and our goal is to to keep going uh with that as long as we can keep the roadways in good condition, so.
One thing you mentioned there, maybe explain that a little bit further when we talked about. Seal coating, and I think it's important to talk about it in realm of this particular area, because I think when. When uh the it's got that different color seal coating to it. That I think was in cooperation with the Brian Red Rock seal coating.
Back in ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. Um, what have you seen statewide that is, you know, and I think that's why we chose to take a different path now. For our seal coating process.
Yeah, so uh statewide, uh we've just experienced a lot of delamination uh in our roadways. Uh, primarily on roadways that have been seal coated. Uh, when they seal coat, it's a layer of a kind of a cutback emulsion. Uh, and then uh they put the chips on it right away, so you can drive on it. Uh, we'd love to just use kind of the the standard practice that everyone uses for their driveways. The problem about that is when you seal coat your driveway, you normally put a couple of sticks and some yellow tape on the end of it. You can't drive on it for two or three days. Uh, that's just not practical with our roadways. Um, so uh statewide, a lot of, and it's it's really more of the local roads. Uh, we haven't seen as much delamination on, you know, like the the state highways or or or. Any facility that has much thicker pavement, uh but it's primarily the local local roads that have three to maybe five inches of pavement. Uh, and and Mr. Mayor, we we so we 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 actually went for a few years without. Uh, any kind of surface treatment because we're kind of waiting uh in limbo for for them not to do some research. Uh, and help guide us on what their next recommended practice was. But now for the last oh three to four years, I think, uh we've been implementing microsurfacing. Which is a relatively new technology. Uh, and as far as we know, it doesn't have any of the negative effects that seal coating.
In fact, uh, many of the people in this neighborhood that we're talking about here will see that on Hundred Seventy Street. Probably next month, huh?
Yeah, that's correct. Have the the contracts here.
Right.
Uh, and we'll get those shipped over to the contractor as quickly as possible, and then we're just kind of at mercy of of their schedule, so. They kind of worked their way around the state generally, so.
Yeah.
That's a very good question. Uh, the road bases in case in KC addition. Uh, what is the age of those and how are those designed compared to what we've been putting in? So it's I mean, we're we're, I guess my point is we're comparing completely different streets. When we look at Pebblebrook, which was constructed under the capital improvement plan and paved versus. You know, how old is the KC stuff and do we actually know what the base?
Yeah, I mean, I do have a roadway inventory that uh with our our best guesses of when pavement was was constructed. Uh, I mean, that so sometime in the nineties, early nineties, I'm guessing for KC addition. I think the roads were there before the nineties, uh and and maybe a major repair or construction project occurred in in the nineties, but. Um, yeah, and and as far as standards or or specs. We really didn't have uh the standards back then. I mean, we did have, the township did have some standards, but they're nowhere near uh the standards that we have now. And you know, another thing too, I think that often goes overlooked is just the traffic. So if you think back uh to the nineteen fifties or sixties, you think about garbage truck. A lot of them were single axle garbage trucks. Um, you know, they were just, there there weren't a lot of quad axle dump trucks on the roads. If you think of school buses from the fifties or sixties, school buses are smaller. Just a lot of our traffic has grown in size and grown in weight over the years. And so as that occurs, uh Minda revises their design guidelines for our local roadways.
So the recommendation would be really, since we would have to do a total road reconstruct if we were actually going to put. Two improvements into these streets would be, and and that's actually borne by the residents as well as the taxpayers. It would make sense to just approve this as we are and continue to repair until we can get to the point where we can actually. Uh, invest in. A new roadway.
Yeah, Councilor Sardabak, uh I I agree with that statement. I mean, really what we're trying to do with this project is trying to improve the surface. Uh, so that uh, you know, just a smoother ride for the folks that have to drive these roads. Uh, and and this project will improve the surface. I know Mr. Conroy uh expressed some concerns with the contractor that. Uh, did our project last year. We've actually had other a lot of other projects uh with that contractor that turned out very well. Um, you know, it's just, it's it's somewhat a matter of uh. Your your end project can only be as good as what you're starting from. And when you're starting from a very rough road, uh we do mill it, we try to to. Try to smooth it out as as best we can. Uh, but uh. Where where I was going with that is is last year, we used uh the different contractor. This year, uh McNamara uh is the. Provided the local quote, and they're the same uh contracting company that did West Side Pebblebrook and all the territorial overlays last year.
And these are the last two roads on the east side to be done. The other roads were.
Over the last couple of years.
Last couple of years have been overlayed.
That Councilor Schumer, there is, I was gonna let the council act uh on the quote that we have in front of us tonight. Uh, and but I did want to point out as well, we still have Clearey Place. Uh, just so north, and I kind of was teetering back and forth on whether or not to include it. Uh, and I was a little bit cautious because with our crack filling quotes this year, we came a little bit over budget. And I didn't want it to to get too close or get over budget, so uh I was. Would ask the council to first consider the quote from you tonight. Uh, then if you'd like me to uh solicit a. Uh, a quote to also do Clearey Place, so we can kind of get everything on the east side of John Deere Drive completed this year. Uh, I'm just ballparking based on these numbers, it's gonna be about thirty thousand. So that would put us, you know, just under a hundred thousand dollars for the year, and our our patching budget is a hundred and twenty thousand, so.
What else is left in that neighborhood? That's it, that's it?
No, it would be uh so Casey Parkway west of John Deere Drive.
Okay.
And then it kind of turns a corner and goes up to Joanna. There is one called. So likely that we could complete next year, which is kind of, you know, we always thought we were on a a three-year plan, so.
So these two roads are budgeted. Um, is this uh assessed to the homeowners at fifty percent like the the normal ones? This is just coming out of city, city funds?
Okay, that's correct. Yeah, because it's more of a maintenance project. Council, if anybody has any other questions, otherwise I'd stand for a motion.
Make a motion to go with that.
So I've got a motion by Siderbox, second by Schumer to um approve the quote from McNamara Contracting for sixty-two thousand. And eighty-seven dollars. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Here, none, motion passes. Engineer Nelson then also asked if we want to direct him to. Um, and I assume would you go back to both all three of the contractors again, or just reach out to Northwest since the mobilization is gonna be. Significant piece of that.
McNamara, right. We just reached out to McNamara because it'd already be there. Uh, and we would ask them if they would also do a clear replace at our contract unit prices. Uh, there were, that way we would save on uh an additional mobilization.
Seems worthwhile to see what that would be at least, and and if it's, you know, we've we're still in it within our patching budget. That would be worthwhile to consider while they're there mobilized. And then that only leaves us a little bit for next year.
Well, I guess my thoughts too, though, are that if we aren't doing it all to clean out the whole neighborhood. We could just leave it for that next if we are doing three-year plan. For the next year after.
But the one piece about it though, Jay, that does make it a little bit nicer to do it this year is that is the the three are next to each other.
I agree, I agree.
Whereas then then next year, then they're splitting up. I think it, are you okay with us at least getting and having Shane get the quote?
I think we should get, see what it looks like, because if we are saving on mobilization, et cetera, there is uh, there is a savings. But that just makes that, so it's Joanna left and KC Court.
Casey Parkway west of John Deere, Joanna to the north, and KC Court to the south. Would be the three for next year, but probably as close to the same footage.
Yeah.
Maybe a little bit less. For next year. So what I'm hearing is, is everybody okay then if we?
I think you should get it. I think we, yeah, oh, it's not, we're not agreeing to do it.
No, we're not today. We're not, we're not approving the.
Yeah, to do it.
I do have just a question on that. Do we, what other roads in the city are in need of uh some patching? For if we're gonna be taking up uh five, six of our budget, what uh what do we think we have left?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't know that we have um anything identified. Uh, that that needs patching. A lot of times, or you know, particularly before we uh. Constructed some overlays and added strength, we would have uh bolts in certain areas in the spring of the year. And we would, you kind of do a spring review, look at the roads that had uh. You know, some severe alligator cracking and and patch those uh roads. Uh, we just, you know, our our roads have really improved quite a bit in condition for the past, say, ten years. And we're not seeing or experiencing as many of those uh breakups in the spring of the year, so. I'm not aware of of anything major. We might have, you know, small patches here and there, but nothing major.
Okay, good. All right. Shane, if you don't mind reaching out to McNamara then and clarify about that last stretch. Before it gets here, by the way, everybody, there is a tornado warned storm to the west of here. Just be aware that we may have to uh leave relatively quickly at some point here. All right, moving on to seven point two, I think we have time. Um, just be aware, we'll keep an eye on it. Discussion of the interview process for the finance director and billing official positions, Administrator Jalinski.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so in your packet, you have some questions to to think about and um discuss and. We'll get some answers to um mainly for the finance director. The the position closed on Friday. Uh, we do have three applications that have been turned in for the position. Um, so I'm just looking for um next steps on on interviews. And um so far, council members, Santo and Markert have volunteered to be in those interviews. Um, just wondering who else we want to have, if we want to do um any community uh members to be on that or any other staff to be in. Any community uh members to be on that or any other staff to be in on that. Um, what what your wishes are for that and then um in the. In the packet, we did have uh the two weeks from today through next week as scheduled. For interviews, um, that doesn't have to be that, those were just anticipated dates, um. But if if there are some dates that would work for. Both of you and and anyone else doing interviews, it'd be great to get those scheduled so we can. Get them in here and and going, so. And then we can talk about the building official after that.
Perfect, so I think um. You have Abe and and Bill set as the council members to, you know, do the primary interviews with the finance director. And I guess I'd say it's up to you guys if you want, you know, other staff involved in that as well. Um, otherwise, if you wanna do the initial ones, I think between you two and Administrator Jalinski. And maybe finalists, maybe we we talk about. Um, having, you know, other council members sit in on it and and staff. That seem like a reasonable process?
Yep, yep, I'm fine with that.
Are there any dates that that work in the next, this week or or next week? Or do you just wanna email me what works for you and we can? Schedule that.
Is, what did we do the other ones, was it at night, Abe?
No, we didn't.
Okay, should we just send him some dates?
Great, thank you. Uh, and then, so we'll just do us three first and then we'll.
And we'll try and do them all on the same day. And 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 actually, Abe, we we wanna look at the the applications, resumes and we. I don't wanna interview someone if they just aren't. We're not interested.
Absolutely, cuz we have three candidates right now.
We do, and I feel that they would all be qualified.
They would be, okay, good.
Uh, and then moving on to building officials, since since we're here, um. We have one application so far that um is a well qualified candidate for that, so just same questions. Um, I don't, I didn't have anyone who volunteered for that, so. Who would like to be in on that process and do we just wanna do this, do the same?
I'd I'd be happy to as well. And I think we do the same thing. Initial and then if we have some finalists, then we spread it out from there.
Alright, and then that application process or will close um July third is the deadline for that, so then. We'll reach out the following two weeks. Those interviews on on that, so. Okay, well, thank you.
Perfect. Alright, so in seven point two, we'll move to seven point three, discussion of the government center committee recommendations. I don't think we have a staff report on this one, um, does anybody wanna start?
Well, I thought, um, since there's multiple recommendations, do we wanna take these one at a time? And and do some of the, maybe the easier ones to talk about? I mean, now, first of all, I'm in favor of all of them, I I think all the recommendations were well thought out. Um, and I would be willing to make a motion tonight to approve all of them, maybe with the um. With the exception of what Tom was talking about tonight, where we do a soil testing first before we do anything. Before we make any further decision on that, what we wanna do with this building. Uh, and purchasing land. But um I was, I was comfortable with all the recommendations they made and and I got a lot of emails from residents who agreed. I didn't get one email where they said, this is crazy, we need to build a new building, we need to buy land, I didn't get any of those. So, um. If you're looking for a motion, I'll make a motion to uh to approve uh to to. Uh, approve all the recommendations and move forward as as it was presented uh a month ago. Will you ask for a second?
I was going to, yeah, I was waiting to see if anybody's gonna volunteer that, but. Good, do you have a motion on the floor, anybody want a second at this time? Anybody wanna second Bill's motion? At this point, the motion's gonna fail due to the lack of a second. I would entertain any further discussion from counsel.
So I'll go back to my original, uh, what I was gonna say, do we, do we hash out any agreement with any of the recommendations, at least get some of these. Of, go, do we agree on any of this stuff?
So, yeah, so the reason. Uh, there's, there's a couple of things in my mind that we gotta talk through is, uh, do we, do we need to remodel? What what's the impetus for for the remodel? Do we, do we have a? A a lack of space, can we be more creative with the space we have? Uh, we have some hybrid type of work, so maybe we flex so that we can make it a little bit more of a. You know, touchdown spots than it is permanent spots, uh, and not even have to do any kind of remodeling. That's. That's one of the things I think we should uh uh talk through is, do we really need to make this larger? Otherwise, I agree, I don't think.
So, so uh to dovetail on that, because I think this brings us into a very good point where there's a big gap that was missed in the report. That actually makes it prohibitive of actually expanding this building. Um, so I reached out and had a conversation with Scott County Environmental Services over the past week. As you guys all know, all building permits require sign off from environmental on the wastewater treatment plans, so. We don't get to skip that step in the process. Discovered that our two thousand and one permit for our holding tank was intended for. One board meeting a month. One part-time employee for two days a week. We are, we have. Two council meetings a month, a planning commission meeting a month and four to five employees here working almost every day right now. And the comment was is that certainly any footprint change of this building would require a septic plan, a wastewater treatment plan.
Sure.
Which there's not room here for that, you'd have to have five thousand square feet of untouched soil. To do that, that also meets setbacks from the road, from the wetland, from the building, from the parking lot.
Is is that a professional opinion though, or is that your thoughts on something?
That is the comment from. The environmental services at Scott County. So the ones who would have to sign off on it.
I'd like to see a report that says that we can't do that.
It's just like, like in development, I mean, you you we could apply for the permit and and see what you get, but uh. That you're still gonna end up in the same spot, Bill, that. That that was the, you know, and I think Leroy, I mean, as you know, forever, that's what we've known about this facility is that. Ever since they changed the configuration, the county road and the entrance, they took the septic. Drain field away from this place and put that holding tank in. And it was never intended to be used like it is today. We've had incidents where it's overflowing, discharged on the ground that we probably should have reported. So it's 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 problematic, and if we don't. If we march down a path of spending more money on this plan and get to a stopping point because environmental's gonna say. No, I can't approve that building permit. We end up in the same spot we're at today, which again goes back to what Abe just said, dude, you know, do we need to do anything at this point? That's why it's natural that it fit in at that point. Because I think that's the showstopper on any expansion at this facility.
In that option also during the discussions. Of the committee. There was, besides a soil test caveat, the other caveat was that this was to be looked at by an architect and engineer. For feasibility to do it, which would probably. A plumbing engineer would definitely be coming up with. Giving us better advice on that. But I also, you know, if we look at it, we have. Close to, well, it is over, it's over sixty years, sixty-two year old building. Pullbar and the posts that this thing relies on for. A foundation. Are sixty-two years old, they predate. Womanized treatment, foundation treatment. Basically, they're turpentine and penta. Uh, treated posts, I, you know, I think we should have, if we are gonna consider any of this, and this is where. There's a lot of residents would love us to do this. Cuz I certainly got a lot of emails about it and everything else, but. In this option, in this option that was being offered. By the committee that actually looked at it quite a bit. That was included, that needed to be, I mean, those things needed to be looked at, I would, I would recommend it if we were gonna consider that at all. That we should actually consider having somebody professional. Qualified professional analyze what we have. And see if there is a possibility to expand. With the codes that we have, with the county requirements. We have, it looks like we have a big lot, but a lot of that is obviously the the easement for. The county highway that that actually ingresses into this property quite a bit. You know, we should be looking at that and we should also fully research. The ability to actually construct something like that and operate on a holding thing. Cuz we, we know that we don't have the space to do that, so if we're gonna do that, I think, you know, before we. Get too crazy about jumping forward with that. Maybe we should hire a consultant or consider hiring a consultant, get some quotes. To look at that and at least see if that is a viable option. Otherwise, you know, I think we. You know, we should be looking at other things. I don't necessarily wanna jump into building something, I really don't. I think we oughta, I think we ought to uh look at continuing to look for land that's suitable. For future needs, because this again is. No matter what we do here, it's a stopgap for five years, ten years max and. You know, I, I agree with a lot of the stuff that they that they looked at and came up with. Uh, I think that uh. When we started this venture, we didn't have a contract for snowplowing that was extended beyond one year. And uh, you know, it looks like we have something that's a lot better. Right now, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's gonna cover Credit River for the next thirty years. And we should not look at, we should not look at what we're. Going forward with, whether it's public works, whether it's uh, whether it's office space or whether it's. You know, the employees that we have. We shouldn't just look at it as a five year, do we need it today, we should be looking, what do we need in twenty years? Because all of this is is financed over a longer period of time. So it's, you know, it's, it's not about saving money today. Uh, it's, it's more about, let's not get caught with our pants down. Ten years from now, when we have a real problem. That's what I get to say.
And I agree with you, Jay, that five years is is not something we should be spending that kind of money on for a five-year lens, that that's a. We'd be better off doing nothing as Abe indicated, if we're only looking for a five-year investment.
I agree with uh Jay that we should hire an architect and whoever other professionals that that would do something where they look at what we have. And we tell them what we want. And we have them tell us whether we can do it or not. I don't think we should just say we're not gonna do it because of the holding tank thing. I don't know how to frame that into a motion, though. And I guess I I where I disagree with with Chris and Dave is that, Jay. Uh, people do wanna save their money over the next five years and if we, if we can extend out as far as possible. So be it.
For five years, we don't need to do anything. To, again, that's why I said back to Abe's point is, if we're, if we're looking at five years. We're probably fine not doing anything.
I I have heard not not per, direct directly, but hearsay, we're, our employees. I mean, when you walk in this building tonight, you could smell whatever you smell, I don't know what it is.
It's probably the hay in the loft.
I I don't know, but.
That's what's up above the ceiling, just staying straw.
But I would like to give our employees something better, if we can. We have six hundred thousand dollars sitting in the bank account today to do things, and if we can make that better. I think we should try and do that, because it's gonna be. If we're gonna lose employee. You can't predict why people leave, leave a job, but if if that's a piece of it where people don't wanna work here because the setting. Isn't isn't conducive to a a professional atmosphere, and I know there's some safety. I heard some some safety complaints, hearsay, safety complaints where, you know, you know, we had that little old door right there. And that's it, there's no, there's no security during the daytime, so. Yeah, I I I think it's worth our while to see what we can do here, um. I don't think we should buy land.
No, we're not in a public hearing right now, Brad, sorry. Any other comments for discussion?
I think we need more information. I think we should just. Figure out how to get more information. If it's, if it's not very expensive, find somebody to give us an honest opinion of the structure that we have here. And it's false, I mean, maybe that's what should have happened. When Kathy embarked in this thing in the past, so. Uh, you know, we should really analyze what we have. Uh, we should, we should look at it from safety aspects, I do agree with Bill on that. I mean, that's, you've got. Things going on in the, in the current events and, and uh, we don't have a very secure building. It's, it's not even secured or wind, so. But we should, we should really look at, if nothing else, we're gonna, if we're gonna continue with what we have. The do nothing part should still have probably an environmental study on us. On this thing and figure out where we're at with that.
Uh, so we did do that, not, did we? We did, okay, that's when we did the floor and everything, we we had an environmental testing company come in and and do an analyzation and then funding it then.
Oh, they didn't. What's the smell then?
I don't know, cuz I I know I smell it when I go home, yeah.
Feel oil for thirty years being eaten in here. I don't know, Aphrol came in and. Cleaned the place and got rid of the mold and all that stuff went on and you got clean bill of health from the county on that too, so. The smell has never left. It got better.
A lot better.
Just much better.
Air fresheners or humidifier around here, I don't know.
But that was, that was what, twelve years ago, maybe we should have it looked at again. Um, I think, you know, we should look at at least a minimum. Amount of uh safety upgrades to the building, which might be, you know, just. A vestibule entrance that's that's got a lockout feature on it and. Some things like that, we should, we should really think about doing, at least. Whether it's temporary, till we get something else figured out or not. But I think if we did, if we were to hire an architect or go back to the architect that we. You know, that we have uh, have engaged already. And have them provide those services in lieu of, you know, some of the other services. And we could look at, we could look at that. I mean, I'm, my concerns is the age of the structure itself. And the footing is in foundations and whether, you know, whether we've got, whether we've got anything.
You remember when we had the siding out?
Thirteen when they.
We should have, we should have probably a structural engineer look at it. We should have an architect look at it, we should have somebody actually give us an honest opinion. Based on the footprint here. Uh, besides having. The sewer issue, whether or not we can actually put anything more on. Just make a, uh, have a further discussion with Scott County as whether or not they would approve. Any further use of it, but we should find those things else that they're definitives, it's not just a rumor, because all I got was. I got forty cut and paste emails that that everybody agrees with the with the committee. That we should remodel this and spend six hundred thousand dollars and and I think. You know, the problem is, is that. A lot of people all of a sudden now think that it's just for six hundred thousand dollars, we can have a new city hall. It can be expanded, it can do everything that we were gonna do and we haven't, you know. We haven't gone that far and so that information isn't there. And I'd like to have real information that I can make a true decision on. And that's, you know, if it's. It should also include who we're hiring, what we're hiring. Uh, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna care, how many people are getting? And it should, it, you know, those are the things that actually an architect can provide for us. And an engineer to to look at, structural engineer to look at. Whether or not we can, and then the layout of the thing, whether or not we can fit it on the footprint. Or add to it or anything else, it was. We definitely need some space, we, for specific needs and. We definitely need some space, we, for specific needs and. Uh, we should really identify those, that's. That's what the study needs to be.
So wasn't that in that space needs analysis that we had done before?
It wasn't, it wasn't. I was never a fan of that.
There were so many positions.
There was a lot of stuff that was unnecessary that was in that, that was bad into that. I think there were other meetings that went on, uh, yeah, outside of Abe and I looking at it, I think Kathy had some input on that. Uh, with them directly that, that we weren't party to and, you know, when this thing landed in front of me at. At the original thirty one million dollars. You know, I, I just looked at it as like, no, you know, this isn't happening.
Right.
And then, you know, then it was reduced to twenty one, which is still ridiculous. You know, this is, I mean, we look at Spring Lake Township, what they did for, you know, their building, you look at Newmarket, I mean. There's some things that got done for a lot less, but it just seemed like. It just seemed like our architect was being guided in the wrong way. And, and we just never got where we needed to be and we stopped them. So we have, we have a project that's, we're sitting there looking at, we still haven't found out what we need to do.
So is that still? Did you, did you guys reach out to him about the bill? Was that the bill that we hadn't paid?
That's still outstanding.
That's still outstanding, so we still are having conversations with them. So if their report didn't meet our expectations?
They were supposed to redo it.
Okay.
There were going to be multiple. Designs until they got to something to meet the budget that we have and so. You know, we haven't, we haven't gotten anywhere on that, so I think they've been paid as much as they should be. They shouldn't be paid the balance at this point. I mean, that's for another discussion.
Well, the reason I ask because to your, to your point, Jay, if, if you're looking to engage somebody that. To do that work and we already have somebody under contract that hasn't finished their job.
I think they should be doing whatever.
Then is that a point where?
Yeah.
They should finish their job.
Yeah, I think it's worth a question. I'd, I'd get along with that to have someone come in here and look at what the feasibility of this is. I still would question if we need to do it still, but.
And that's fine, yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, we're not, we're not, just asking for what you just said wasn't, just like the road. It's asking for the next step.
Absolutely.
Uh, again, if we're not satisfied with the report that they gave us the first time around because they didn't finish out what we asked them to do. Then they owe us something.
I believe so.
Yeah, and we can definitely get on the phone with them again, because I don't think we've solved that.
No.
Those issues with the.
Right.
The invoices.
I mean, I think that's a reasonable next step if we're going to do something to look at something different. Um, to look at an alternative that, that. Is let's ask the people that we contracted with to finish their job to satisfactory. And get.
I mean, the point they'll make is they were asked to. Look at uh, building a new building, right, or do a space needs analysis. Not necessarily go past a space needs analysis. I, I suspect that's right there and I come back.
That's the design phase that they have, but then if you read the contract, it also says that they will provide. I mean, there's more to read than that and, and I think that we didn't actually arrive. Where we, where we need to be with it.
Yeah, we can definitely have that dialogue.
And I think we could certainly incorporate this. We could just say, hey, let's take a good, let's do a space needs analysis on this particular building. What we have, um, you know, is there, is there a way to expand it? I'm not real positive after hearing what Chris found out from the county. Uh, on the permit for the. For the holding tank that we have. Cause you know, that's, I mean, there's reasons that those permits are limited to certain uses and restrictions. And uh, I didn't realize that that one was, that probably should have been the first thing we looked at.
So we've been out of compliance for. Few years. Probably closer to ten years.
I would ask if we hire an architect to take a look at a space needs analysis that we use the advisory committee's uh, schematics that. That shows the office layouts and all that stuff. I mean, I really liked what they, they spent a lot of time on this. I really like what they, what they proposed.
That's not actually a space needs. Analysis. That is, that's suggested spaces. It's good, I mean.
What's, what's, what's the difference between space needs analysis and a, and whatever you said it was?
There's a lot of difference.
Okay.
Well, I guess I would ask then uh, for next steps is to have Abe and Jay and, and Steve work with. To see what kind of, you know, i- if there's still opportunity on the contract that we have. If they're going to charge us anymore or not. Would be the, you know, one, step one. What, what do the OS, are they going to, you know, pout over the, what we haven't paid them yet? I don't know. You guys talk to them and figure out what. What our options are there and I, I would say that would be the place to start.
And even if they, let's say they, they go pound sand, then can we hire an architect to do what we want them to do? That's.
Well, I think that would be the next step, Bill, that would be the next step after is to, to propose somebody else.
But can we give them direction to go and find an architect though? I mean, I don't want to wait. Who knows? It took them, it's taken them a couple of weeks to even get back to a sign invoice question. I, I. I don't think they're going to do anything for us, to tell you the truth, but.
My question is, do we have a burning need right now to, to hurry that?
Yeah, I don't know that we have a hurry. Let's just storm knocks the building down in a little bit.
I think before writing off, off the. Uh, remodel, we should have that. I don't, I just, I would question if. We go down that path right now, trying to find one, one, we just have to get that answer from BKV.
Yeah, will they look at the septic system then too, or do we have to hire a professional, whoever that is?
When we talked with BKV, there was one of their specialties is they knew septic.
Okay.
So now we didn't talk. In our discussions about per se, I don't believe this building, so it was always about, okay, what was needed at the other site? So, but that doesn't mean that we could not have that conversation.
And Chris, when you say holding tank, are you talking about the tank that holds liquid underneath the ground?
That's all there is here. That's all there is here.
Okay, but that's what you're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, so. As opposed to a holding tank where the, where you have a drain field.
Right.
To, to process the liquid.
So we need a bigger holding tank.
The trucks are only so big to pump them out.
When we did that, we put the biggest one in we could at the time, county would let us. You know, twenty three hundred gallons.
What's the frequency we're pumping right now? At a cost of what?
Five hundred.
Five, six hundred.
Uh, the, the gentleman on the committee made a lot of recommendations. I still would like to go through the recommendations and. And uh. And, and, and get consensus that this is where we want to go, so can we do that? They spent a lot of time on this stuff. I also want to just like put it, put it back.
Well, so let me, let's just, that's fine, Bill, but let's talk about this first, so. When we gave them direction, we gave them six objectives. Right, so objective one was to provide feedback on the space needs analysis that had previously been prepared. Objective number two was to review and provide feedback on the different phases that were proposed. Objective three was to discuss options and alternatives to the project. Four was to collaborate with staff on finances. Five was to. Um, have workshops and in, obtain input and feedback. Six was to regularly communicate. I think. Some of number three was completed. But. All these other recommendations and things that they looked at. Were not part of the directions that we gave them.
Uh, I would, I guess I would disagree with that. Number one, what the space needs analysis, I think that was the, the highlight of what they did was.
Right.
What do we really need for this? I mean, that was laid out exactly what. Uh, the needs were the, were for the space.
Right.
And that's.
Schematics I was talking.
Yeah. And I think based off of that, there wasn't a lot of need to go a lot of further with phases or why not, because. The recommendation was there isn't a need. Which I do agree with.
But the, their analysis was all on public work stuff, not on, you know, other things that also happen in here.
Correct, and that was the reason why they said they would recommend a remodel of a place because they didn't need anything massive. Whether or not that's feasible or not is not a.
Right, 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 right.
Saying that, but that was what they were coming back with. Is the need for uh, more office space, more uh, conference space, voting space, so. I, I guess I wouldn't disagree. I think they did do number one.
I mean, I think that if we actually uh. You know, you look at some of the different configurations that they, that were. Brought up and everything else, that if we did, if we were able to accomplish those. In this location. Then it definitely would carry us probably for the next ten years is, is my guess, you know, it's, it's, I would have liked to have had a little bit. More delving into it. Uh. But I think if we were able to do that, you know, the, so the question really for us now at this point is figure out. Uh. We should, we should either embrace or eliminate. Uh, the option, that option on this location, you know. We should find out. What we can and can't do. Physically. With it and, and, you know, at least, at least explore that. Then we can either turn that off and look elsewhere, look at some other things or uh, plan some. Way of transitioning from this to somewhere else. It's uh, a- and in the meantime, now we could look at. Temporary solutions within, you know, within this that would make it. A safer, better place for people to work here. I think it's, I think it is, we should look at. We should look at trying to get some professional advice on it, um, you know, as to what we can do with it and what we can't. Uh, with property, property as a whole. Not just, you know, not just what we have, but whether or not we can actually add to it or not. I am concerned that we probably can't. Add more and that we've got a problem because for one, if we're out of compliance with our, with our, uh, with our holding tank permit and everything else as it is. Uh, then. We would have to deny. Whether we're the building authority or not, we would have to deny a permit. Based on the codes and everything else that it's, you know, that it's a non-compliant system. There's no other resident here that has a non-compliant system that can, that can get it, can get a permit. You know, obviously, you know, we're taking over, approving it, but uh. You know, that's, it's still something we have a responsibility to. You know, to govern ourselves as well, so. Uh. You know, if we were to, I, I think, I think what we ought to be doing right now is we ought to be looking at. What can we do with the, with the current um, situation that we have a contract for? Uh, I think if, if at some point we need to discuss whether or not to terminate that contract and finish it, uh, we also have a construction. Instruction manager that was hired at that time that we have a contract with. Uh, you know, we should. It should not just sit here and, and, and continue to flow along, we should end those. Uh, or we should modify them so that they would at least get done what we need to get done here. And uh. From there. Uh. Figure out the things, so. Environmental assessment of the thing. Uh. Holding tank and sewer and waste and water. And um, and then structural for the footings and foundations of the existing buildings, which is their posts. Uh, you know, there's sixty two year old posts right now in the ground for a long time. I can't believe that there's much left of them. That's what's holding up the building now, you know, we should be really looking at whether or not we'd be adding onto that.
Everybody keeps bringing this up. This wasn't looked at in two thousand thirteen with the siding, it all tore off and. The post, everything looked good.
Posts under the ground?
Went down.
Yeah.
Two or three feet, it didn't show any rock, so.
That's good, um.
Guys keep coming up with this crap.
Then what we should do is we should have a professional sign off on it and say, yeah, you can, you can add on, we could do that. Which means we get somebody to assess, give us some assessment on it. Same thing with the architect and whether or not we can actually build anything more. And a professional engineer that can tell us what we can do with the, with uh, with sewer treatment, if we can do anything more. But I mean, I agree, I mean, you got, you had a twenty three hundred gallon tank. Or twenty five, I'm not sure what it is, but, but you know, twenty three hundred and you got a, you got a basically a tanker truck that carries that amount.
I got multiple holy tanks in my yard. I don't understand why we only are. We can only have one unless it's a land issue, so.
You have a drainage.
Okay.
It was two point three acres there or two point one.
Yeah.
Even that much.
But. Can't you, we have, the holding tanks under the park. I, I don't know, I, I'm not a professional on any of this. That's why I want to hire, like Jay said, let's hire somebody to say, can we do this or can't we do this on this? And then, and then we know. And then at least the residents know that we're looking at that as opposed to looking for land and building a, a new building.
I, I guess my question on the council was, you know. The number one was the space needs analysis. They came back with a significantly different space needs analysis than what was originally planned. And, well, I, I frankly agree with it. I don't think we need that extra space for anything due to. Uh, specifically the snow plows, because that was our main concern. Um, so I guess that'd be my question of the council is. Do we agree or disagree with the space needs analysis? Because if we agree, then I think, then we're just talking about a singular. Uh, building, whether or not this is something that we need to even do anything with or not. Cause I still stand, I don't think we need to do anything.
I don't think we need to do anything with the facility, building a facility for public works. That, if that was your question.
Uh, it's public works and city hall.
City hall is for the reasons I mentioned before, related to security, related to the smell, related to maintaining employees. I, I know we have, it's free cash right now, it's sitting in our bank account. If we can spend a little bit of that stuff to do something. I, I'd be okay with it. If we don't want to do any, and I don't want to spend any money for, nobody want, else wants to, but I heard concerns about this place. Not directly, but hearsay.
I think we should uh. Improve this, try to. And I think we should go out and look for some land because it's getting less and less every day. And we don't need twenty some acres, if we could find eight acres. To then. Start to look at putting up a building in five years or something. Three, four years, I don't care. This thing's been. Stuck a Band-Aid on it for the last twenty years. So. And I don't think anybody out here would want to sit here and work eight hours a day. In here.
Yes, you do, Amy. You want to see.
Would it be appropriate to ask staff of what their opinions are of the building at this point?
I think.
Yeah.
They choose to answer that. That's fine with me.
Uh, one, one thing that, you know, the mayor had alluded to was um, for, we have a tornado warned storm coming, so we don't have. Any type of storm shelter or protection and any type of severe weather here, you know, whether it's winter, summer, what have you. Um, so there's nowhere to go in that, uh, and then security is a big, big concern too, just with. You have a door handle lock on the main door, uh, and that's it, so. Uh. Yeah, security is a big thing, um. You know, that you get used to the smell, but.
Maybe, maybe, I heard maybe an air exchange too, type of system that you can install to circulate the air, that might help the smell too. But.
Um, but you know, we have a bathroom that sits right outside of the clerk's office, which is not soundproof, which is not smell proof, which is. Really uncomfortable, um, for the most part. It's, it's a unisex bathroom, which in itself isn't a, a huge deal, but. Um. You know, just, just some of those small things. You know, not deal breakers, but.
Thank you for letting us weigh in, Mary and Council, um. I would agree with Steve as far as, um. We do have security concerns, especially like when one of us is in here alone. Um, people will bang on the door and rattle the door and we can't actually like look out to see who's out there without. Opening the little blind and then they can tell that we're in there. He was right about the bathroom. Uh, he was also right about the storm shelter. That was a big concern that I had because. There was a tornado warning here during the day, what day? There was a tornado warning here during the day, what day, I'm not sure, we had no idea what we were going to do. It, it's just things like that where it's, it's always kind of cold because it comes up from the floor, um the smell, you know. There's no privacy, so when we're on the floor, we're bothering everybody else. And I have had some ideas that. Might help, uh might save some money if anybody is interested. I would, I would sure that would be.
Please.
I would, yeah, I'd be interested for sure.
Sent out an email, I have something already sort of grounded that I.
Thank you.
Been here very long, but if you uh fresh eyes.
Oh, I've been here for like three weeks. I agree with what they said about the security, I mean, I've worked in. You know, I've had like twenty-eight years, but I said in the time period, it, there has been some, you know, sometimes you never know who's going to be coming into city hall. Um you know, there isn't a security and and so I've run across those situations before. And I've worked in little towns of three hundred and fifty to. Five thousand to ten thousand to seventeen thousand, so I've, you know, run across, it doesn't really matter. I didn't really notice the smell until you guys were talking about it.
It was offline till then.
But uh I mean, you know, maybe, you know, it it does kind of smell like. Um you know, fuel but or diesel, but um I am allergic to mold and mildew, so I could tell you that if there was mold in here. You would hear me constantly and I have never had a problem here. But there is a problem with um the tornado, the shelter, and I agree with the other things that they brought up too.
Have to dig a hole like a cellar, an old-fashioned cellar, so you guys can.
Shane, you've spent a lot of time there. You have any input? You have any input on the, on the uh holding thing?
Yeah, I did, I have spent a quite a bit of time here, I mean. Nothing substantial in a little, but you know, the windows are old, they don't feel really good, doors don't feel good. Uh I used to have, he said, he stuff in C's office back there and. Every year you get all those. We literally thousands of them. But you know, that that stuff doesn't really bother me.
Wait till fall.
That stuff doesn't bother me that much, but you know, at at my office too, we, we do. Regular renovations every ten years or so, just to freshen things up. Uh because we think it helps with employee retention, so. Um I would offer that, and then as far as the the septic tank, yeah, I mean the. You know, you can only provide enough water, it's feasible to get out of the truck, so. I don't know if it matters if the truck comes once every three or four weeks, one trip or. You know, does it, well, spreads it out and that makes two trips, you could double the storage or quadruple the storage. But if you're not able to provide enough treatment, uh suppose the water in a grain field. And what more storage gets you. So I I would actually think that probably the best course of action would be try to find a certified septic system designer. Um and just have them do some soil borins and see if they can come up with anything, but not likely.
Well, I still think we go back to let the building committee of Abe and Jay and. Steve work with our current contractor and. See what we have left there and see if there's any opportunity or anything there, start there. And go the next steps from there.
Yeah, well, you guys got my last email on Thursday, I think, my thoughts on everything, maybe we should there. And at this point, just reach out to them, I don't know if Steve wants to do that.
And I'd be happy to get a call too.
Be happy to call or meet or whatever we're gonna do.
Well, that until talking about the certified septic system or no?
That would just be able to understand what, what do we have left from, from them and can we then?
And then bring that back and I suppose.
But they focused to this building instead.
And I suppose you could get a question on that if they say they have experience in that. Ask them about it, what's their opportunity there? All right, any other comments on this subject?
Was, I I still am interested in what the council thinks about these recommendations about using third-party providers to do all of these work, to do this work. Because the ba- the the space analysis was based on outsourcing most of the things we do, outsourcing everything that we do today. And continue doing that, I'm in favor of that. I'd like to hear what other councilmen think about that, it's really status quo, and that's what we're talking about.
I fully agree.
So every one of them's fine for the immediate, you know, maybe five years, but. That's not taking any steps towards the ten, twenty, thirty-year outlook of Credit River. You know, you could have a developer popping one of these edge properties again. Heard that there's some tires being kicked again, and you could add a bunch of homes in a, in a pretty quick way. Um and then you'd be caught in the spot where you have to stand it up all at once. So if if you're not thinking forward, you're going to put the future people in a pretty bit tough spot. Again, they're a hundred percent correct, for the next five years, these, these recommendations. For still plowing, mowing and tree trimming probably work fine.
Yeah, I think they do.
But you, but after five years, you don't know.
What we don't, what we need at this point now is the ten.
I think their, their recommendation on individual septics is, is in, doesn't comply with our comprehensive plan or the community designation from the. From the, my council. Plus, we have five hundred workforce housing units in the northwestern quadrant that we just heard a presentation on why that doesn't work. Sustainably for them.
How's that impacting Credit River, what is that, five hundred?
Workforce housing units, the housing units in northwest quadrant that were built in the sixties that. Again, I'm moving through the re- recommendations on here, Bill. Public Works Building, a- again, we've, you know, we've got some equipment today, maybe, you know, today it's working fine. Maybe we don't need to build anything right now today. I think there's an opportunity if one wanted to look at leasing a space. Buck twenty-six a square foot being built right now. I don't think that anal- analysis was completed.
Well, we have a grader that we've got a house. I mean, right now we have a place for it, but same time we're driving it. Quite a ways to use it.
Three miles.
Is it three? Well, it's not quite a ways, what's far. How long does that, how long does that option last?
I know, we're really not, but we have a. I think we have a handshake agreement for that. Because we have. Our part-time employee is related to the owner of the property.
Selling the. F three fifty truck, and then you guys want to donate a truck that I use weekly then? Do uh do odds and ends around the city?
I don't really, right, because I don't have one, but.
I could use your BMW, Bill.
No, I don't have a BMW either, but.
It'll fit in the truck.
We, we have to be careful to. With, y- you're an independent contractor for the city. To me, I'm not sure whether it's, we're allowed to use city property if you're an independent contractor. And I don't know.
I charge it. Man hours, not.
No, I'm just saying though, that do you, do you lose that uh independent contractor? Qualification or certification when you're using city, city equipment to do your independent contracting work? I don't think we've ever thought about that, Peter's not here tonight, but that's something we should consider. Oh, Peter's on? Peter? That's scary.
Something on his end.
Okay, but but Abe, you were saying that you do that in the private sector?
I, I, I provide laptops and software all the time, no, that's tech, so I'm not sure. If that. Plays in there.
Never had a problem with it before, so.
Right, I don't think the question was ever asked. When, when you, when the resolution to uh approve all of you guys having independent contractor status, it never talked about equipment. Using equipment for the city. And it said they pay you for your equipment at a hundred bucks an hour, whatever the number was, but it didn't talk about. Because we didn't have any equipment, we didn't have a, we didn't have a truck. I'm talking specifically about.
I, I'm thrilled that we're not in the snowplow business, I mean, I like the fact that we've got something worked out and it seems like it'll work for. A period of time. You know, does that work for us twenty years from now? You know, or is it too, too early to think about that, but we, you know, we should be thinking about things like that. Although I personally, I I'm very, very happy that we've agreement, a long-term agreement with them. Long-term being a few years and something that we could probably renew. Uh you know, it's kind of funny to think about the fact that we just about lost that, that whole thing over a mailbox lawsuit. And you know, that's, that also shows how fragile that is. But we do have, we do have something worked out there, what we don't have worked out is all of the things that aren't. Mowing the parks, mowing the ditches, uh all the things that are, that Leroy does for us, we don't have. Any of that worked out, you know, there's, so, you know, we can certainly find more contractors. And I think then all of a sudden we see a, a big increase in prices and costs for some of that. But regardless, that should still be part of the equation when we figure out what we need for space or what we need for anything else, you know, whether it's supplying, you know, whether we're storing our signs. Uh you know, like you're mentioning, we, we somehow have to get into. You know, we are one development away from having other issues, uh you know, coming in and. There's not a lot we can do to say no to some of that. So, you know, we should be, we should really be thinking about that uh at, at this point. You know, nothing in sight, so yeah, it, you know, it looks great, but we can be safe and say we're not going to do anything, but. To, to not at least think about the future and what we have to do. Is definitely uh not doing any of the residents here a service.
Then I'd recommend, I mean, one of the things that the advisory committee did is they tried the best they could to know. You know, five years is what they could reasonably gauge, right? So I think that. I think the disservice the city council is doing to the advisory committee and the residents is not. Then putting that data in front of uh residents to be able to understand why. What do we see past five years, right? Instead of just going straight to a, a building and this is what it's going to cost, I think we owe it then to the residents to be able to say, this is why. We need a, we need a building, or this is why we need a, a SADA system, or this is why we need a, a, a some, some plows. I don't think that was done very well, I think we had the idea that we needed a city hall and a public works department, we never got to the. To the why, so I think. Regardless of what we do with this building. If, if we're going down the path of saying we need to think about it in the future because five years is too short, then we need, I think we need to. Help the residents understand what, what we see five, past five years. And you know, we talk about water, okay, what's a SADA system, what's the importance of that, why is, why have we been talking about that? Um I think that. Very few residents understand that. And I think that we just have a, I, I think we could do a much better job at communicating what, what the need may be. I'm not opposed to looking at land because I think at some point in time we will need something. Is it five years, is it ten, is it twenty, I don't know. But I think we need to also be very real and. Communicative of what we see five, ten, fifteen, twenty years out. My personal opinion.
Yeah, you're not wrong, um that, that's where I think, where we should go back and think about that presentation from. The, the, the building, the people we hired to do that, right? They, they missed the ten slides that should have been in front of that deck of talking about where we are today. And the future needs, right, and that, that, that's what got missed in that whole.
Yeah, and I think the piece though that I think is really concerning, especially the advisory committee is. Yes, we have Gallaghers. So what we're saying is. Four years Gallagher says no, there's no one else, there's no, no other option, we have to go, I think that's where. It would behoove us to go through that conversation, be able to say, this is what we see, this is what we could even. You know, there was some comments of, can we subsidize a company that wants to get in that business? So help them get in the business, uh can we uh find another contractor that's out there? Are there di- different options versus just going straight there, and I think that we should as a council go through that process to talk about. That rather than just say we need to go get snowplows.
So I, I think honestly, we've, we've, at least at this point, we've kind of eliminated the need for snowplows. You know, through this exercise that we did, and you know, I think the committee did some good work on that as well. You know, looking at it and at the same time. We finally got, we got some good administrative. Actions to negotiate a contract, that eliminated that. Dynamically sword hanging over the top of us for, you know, for some time, at least it bought us, it bought us something. We still, we still should always have that as, you know, a needed service that we have to provide. And so we should always have at least another option. You know, to, to provide that if, if one fails, we should have that, but there are other things that we do, I mean, we addressed. We addressed the current things that we are doing, we didn't address anything else. That wasn't, you know, on the current list of the tasks that the city provides. There are the, there are future tasks that we need to definitely look at. And as a council, we need to really look at that and we need to express, show that there is a need. You know, that, and we should have, we should have ways of dealing with them as they come, you know, we can't just say. We're good until, you know, we don't need to spend money, we don't need to do anything until the point when something hits us in the face. And, and then we're, now we're behind trying to, trying to deal with it. I mean, there are, contractors can go a long ways, we can, we can certainly work with contractors, but you know, as, as we have right now, we have. You know, we have a whole lot of other tasks that are being performed for the city that are not on any of these lists at all. You know, there's, there's a number of different things that we, that we do as a city or the residents, Leroy's taken care of a lot. You know, at some point Leroy is not doing it, so who's going to do it?
All right, well, I think we still have a agreement then anyways to, you know, have Jay and Abe work with Steve on, on figuring out some options with our current. Provider that we have a contract with, let's let them do that, keep these other things in mind that we can keep on for continued discussion as we move forward.
Can I just make one more statement? You know, I'm a big proponent of not doing anything, but at the same point, I do think we need to continue to have these dialogues a little bit more frequently, so maybe that could be something. On a regular, somewhat of a regular basis to talk through uh snow plowing. Uh what does that mean, what is it, what, what happens if they give us notice? Uh do we want to start looking for other contractors, do we want to look at subsidizing another business to start it, do we want to look at the county, I mean. Rather than just wait until Gallagher gives it and then go straight. I mean, rather than just wait until Gallagher gives it and then go straight there and say, you know, we're behind the eight ball. Which I know that's not what you're proposing, but that's the other way is why not look at different options as well? So I, I would propose that we have some regularity on these conversations so that we aren't, uh, waiting until it's too late.
Agreed, hundred percent. We can't wait till it's too late. Then it's a really big lift. All right. Sounds good. Staff and council member reports. Shane, anything? Steve?
Uh, next week, Wednesday through Friday is the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in Duluth, so I will be, uh, up there attending that and out of the office.
Abe?
Nope.
Leroy? For the next meeting, I'd like to take a look at. Possibly amending the bylaws for communication with staff from. Council or planning commissioner, any of us, so you can have that do it. Okay. Anything else? Okay, sounds good. Um. Think, let's see, just looking back. The only thing I've got, just update for the council, uh, Administrator Jalinski, uh, myself, uh, council member Markert. Um, and Sue will be meeting with the, uh, self passage HOA. On Friday in regards to the, uh, capital project that we completed there and the, and how that was being funded, so. Just FYI. Gee?
Uh, I went to the scale meeting, uh, Friday and they had legislative update where they had, uh. A lot of the legislators, senators and, uh, house reps for Scott County were there and gave a report. Recently they passed a seven hundred million dollar infrastructure bonding bill. Uh, which included drinking water, roads, bridges and waste. And then, uh, the one sixty-nine, two eighty-two interchange was passed as a standalone bill. Uh, there was a hundred and fifteen million dollar cut in bonding. And, uh, you know, a lot of the, one of the comments, Senator Pratt said that, uh, government agencies got everything they asked for. Uh, everybody else didn't, um. And that's pretty much what I have. The other, the other issue, which is gonna be probably a concern of people. Uh, there was about a thirty-six million dollar shift of state responsibilities to the counties. Uh, that's down from, there was ninety million and there's ninety million more possible. So, you know, that's something where people probably see tax bills rise because the county should make up the difference. Uh. One other thing, I got an email this week from, from a resident. And I found the source, which is basically a clickbait on, show me the news, um. Stating that Credit River was the second highest taxed city. In the state.
Yeah, you didn't know that?
No, I didn't. Uh, I actually took, I actually went to the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, site and I actually did their spreadsheet. And I found that out of over four hundred cities and townships in Minnesota.
Eight hundred and sixty, yeah, better on that spreadsheet.
Uh.
We're forty-eighth in the lowest.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, so we're actually.
Lowest, lowest in the metro.
Yeah, but they use, they use some really weird math, which, which amounted to somehow they assigned, uh, the average house in Credit River is one, one point five million. And it pays seventeen thousand dollars in taxes overall. Uh, that doesn't include this, well, that includes the city tax that's in it. And then they did some more math and they came out with, well, that's, you know, with the average house in Credit River pays seventeen thousand dollars in taxes. Where it's, where the second largest highest taxed city in the state. And it's just, it's bad math and I hope that it doesn't, it's spread around the city.
That was, that was.
Consider the source.
That's old.
Yeah, it's two years old.
Yeah.
Is it? And, and, and they're factually right. I mean, we pay a lot of taxes. If you live in this city, dollar wise, we pay a lot of taxes, but it's not the city. It's the li- school district. It's the county, the county.
Yeah.
Is ridiculous and it's, um, yeah, it's not the city.
So.
But they're factually right, but they're just misrepresented. They're, they're misdirecting, misdirecting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I, uh, as I watched the trees bend, I'll make this short, um. I went to scale also and listened to the legislators and I also, uh, a number of us went to the park, the, uh, Scottsview Park. Uh, it's really in the park. Unfortunately, we only had about eleven people that showed up and, and a lot of them.
Most of them are here.
Here tonight, so we didn't, uh, but we listened to, a lot of the talk was about, uh, what we talked about tonight.
Yeah.
Um, we didn't talk about, uh, stop signs in that neighborhood. We didn't talk about the infield that, that has weeds in it or. Now, I, I thought it would look good this year.
Well, well, it was fifty percent better than it was last year.
Okay, yeah, so.
It's great. It still needs to work. Got sprayed.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, yeah, that was one interesting piece, by the way, uh, thank you for bringing that up, cause I forgot I was gonna bring that up too, but. Just the one topic and I just, I, I didn't prep anybody for this, but I threw it out there and it seemed to generate a little bit of interest, talking about.
Oh, boy.
Organized collection of solid waste.
Hmm.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I wasn't suggesting that we do it. I was suggesting that we might take a look at it and I, I. I, I want that to be a topic of future of our, as we go out in the rest of the parks, but considering the number of garbage providers we have today. The rates that we pay and could we? Save money, save our residents money on rates and on our road maintenance, because if we organized and only allowed one provider. And for whatever that means, right? Does that mean, I don't know if, does that mean that the city did the billing? Did they do the billing for, I, I don't know. There's. A lot to talk about in that conversation and I'm not championing for it today or anything, but something to keep in mind as we go along and. Part, part of that study I think would be Shane talking about a little bit about road maintenance, do a little bit of thought process of what. Every garbage truck means to our road maintenance budget, right? I mean, things like that, but I look at. City of Jordan, um, Administrator Nick and him down there, they just recently went organized and his bill was cut in half. And this, and the providers providing a lot of extra for that city.
Well, relative, the city getting into billing it, it could be accomplished by doing a franchise.
Could be, Jan, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not asking to first discuss it or discuss it tonight. I just, you know, it was the things that.
Discussion.
Well, I think I wanna get through the rest of the.
Gotta get.
Park meetings to get a little bit more, a little more topics and then we can talk about and have staff do some homework on it at some point, so.
Yep.
Again, not, not a, not a topic we're gonna solve tonight, but. Sue, anything?
No, I'll, I'll be at the, she'll be away from June twenty ninth to July third.
Okay. Amy? Uh, your microphone's on. I know you hit the button, but hold it. There you go.
Um, I went to the regional board meeting of, uh, MCFOA last Tuesday, uh, had some presentations about. Use of AI in cities and a lot of information about.
Cool, thank you.
Amy, when does the, uh, newsletter go out? The, the summer one? Next month? Okay, so you're gonna wanna, do you want me to draft an article or do you wanna draft it for the vision? For the vision statement? Yes, yeah. I, right. Do, do you want me to do that or you wanna do that? Okay, I just, when, when's the deadline? Or in the next two weeks? Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Mr. American, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You can. Thank you. Thank you, Leroy. Motion by Santos, second by Showmore, all in favor, say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Stay dry. It's raining like crazy. We ended just in time for you guys all to walk out and get wet.
That's yours.
Thank you.
Even?
Yes, sir.
But it's our cap, the addition tomorrow night, maybe it's. It isn't too wet.
Do you, I was gonna, someone came in today asking about treatment and pouring.
Yeah.
Uh, is that upgrading schedule at all? So they're like showing potential, but.
Can I send you some things that, um, that Lucas was sending us on a monthly basis or see if you can just continue to do that? I think it's just a matter, it's just some kind of accounting, um, like can, fund balances and things like that. Well, that, that can be done quarterly, which we're getting to the end of the quarter, but I'll, I'll send it to you. It's a monthly reconciliation, bank reconciliations. I think that's all it is. Okay. But I'll send you what he, he has sent in the past. I, I'm probably the only one he sends it to, so I'm the only one that care. It's, it's interesting then. Yeah, okay, no problem. Oh, no.
Yeah.
Got it. Are you all up? Are you, you got all your passwords now and you're signing cards and all that stuff? You're all set. I can't believe it's been three weeks already. That was, I missed last me, I missed, uh. The last meeting two weeks ago.